Good evening. It is January 16th, 6:15 PM. I'd like to call and order the meeting of the Perry Carnegie Library Board. Roll call please.
Coleran, Gilbert, here. Franklin, here. Marshall, Ahern, here. Sebo, here. Stroller, here. Johnson.
Here.
I'd like to declare a quorum. Brian Ahern will lead us in our invocation this evening.
All right, thank you Bill. Let's all pray. Father, we do thank you for all of the wonderful blessings you pour out into our lives. I'd like to lift up a special prayer to each and every person that is faced with working outside, our city workers, our farmers, our policemen, whatever it may be, that you would provide just great protection to them and blessing to them for providing a wonderful, awesome service to those of us that need to stay warm, they need to drink water, whatever it may be. So we just pray a special blessing over there. For tonight's meeting, may we have constructive feedback, may we be positive visionary leaders and lights in this community, and more than anything, Father, may we give you all the glory for what happens in this community. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Brian. You have before you the consent agenda. What would the board like to do with that?
Make a motion where you heard the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
Yes.
Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the library, Carnegie Library Board. Any comments? Seeing none, at this time we'll have the presentation of the core report from the library, Pam Race.
So the collaboration room was finished recently. A special thank you to the Roberta Wedgeworth Reading Fund. Friends of Roberta have said that Roberta would have loved the room. Also, a big thank you to Chris Burbow and the Street Department for making the built-in desks. The room has already been used and has at least one booking for this week. Library directors from surrounding communities met here on Friday, January 12th. This is really an idea exchange. We talk about everything from cell phones in libraries to grant money. We all have different strengths and hearing what other libraries do gives us inspiration with the participating library directors. We will be closed for the installation of cables on Monday, January 22nd. We might be closed a little bit longer. Having the public in the building and workers using tall ladders, well, that isn't a good combination. So, a new set of switches will also be installed. Eighty percent of the price for the cables and switches are covered by E-Rate. I have also asked for a grant to help cover our portion and received a little over $3,000 to help cover our expenses from the Oklahoma Department of Libraries. The new set of switches will need to be configured and installed. The results from the IMPACT survey are in. We will use these results to help us create a current technology plan within the next six months or so. Katie Carmack, the children's librarian, held a very popular program with the library. In previous years, we have requested that Santa visit for storytime. This year, Katie asked Santa to visit one day later when school was out for the holidays. Had over 40 children visit Santa. Katie had a Christmas movie playing downstairs, a draft and a snack. Upstairs, our Santa was hearing requests from the kids. It's interesting to have new employees and see how things can be tweaked and improved. Katie will be meeting with library staff who work with children on February 2nd at Cushing to exchange ideas on children's programming. We are hoping to host a summer day for summer reading program ideas in a couple of months. My Free Taxes is available on the library website now and is free for those making $64,000 a year or less. An incremental fee appears based on the salary over the limit of $64,000. My Free Taxes is a free site to prepare your state and federal income taxes. It is supported by the United Way and uses H&R Block software. I've got some really good feedback on this in previous years. So I think this is an awesome service for our community. Katie will be taking courses to learn how to work on our WordPress website on January 22nd and 23rd. We are being moved to a newer version of WordPress. Melissa Astin from the Oklahoma Department of Libraries is making the changes. Twice within the past six months, I have helped residents of Perry receive services from the Oklahoma Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped. This service offers a player and audiobooks. The items are mailed to the patron and returned in the mail free of charge. So, you know, if you have loved ones, they don't necessarily have to be blind of physical impairment and they can use these services also. Of course, we still offer books available for download via Overdrive. You do need a library card for this service. I'm still amazed at the number of patrons who depend on this service. We usually don't see their mugs until their library card expires and then they call us letting us know they can't download a book. So it's funny. You don't see these people. You don't even know they're there and all of a sudden they call panicked. But it's a good panic, a happy panic, and we're very happy that they're downloading the books. We are excited what we're doing for the citizens of Perry. We are doing our best to not only think short-term, but also to think what can be accomplished long-term. Any questions?
No questions. No questions? Thank you Pam.
Thank you Pam, you're doing a great job.
She's way too thorough.
We'll move on to item six, review and give city council recommendation for the adoption of the collaboration room policy. There's some, the policy is actually in your notes. Any questions?
Wanted to make certain that this was a tremendous asset for our library and anytime you add something new, there needs to be some guidelines to it. We don't want this to be set up for abuse or anything like that. So I think Pam's put together a good policy that encompasses just about everything that could come up. So I'm real pleased with what she's done. So thank you Pam.
Pam has gone over several of our policies at the library, reorganized them and updated them. She does a really good job. What would you like to do with this?
Maybe approve.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
All right, item number seven, recommendation to the Perry City Council to approve the public construction contract with A Best Roofing for repairs to the north side of Perry Carnegie Library roof in the amount of $12,014. Apparently we have a leak on the north side, Larry?
Yes, sir, we do. We have a number of buckets that are underneath the roof and when substantial rain, we do get some moisture in there and we're afraid that previous repairs done some years back are no longer helpful to the structure integrity of the building. So we have called a number of contractors in. Some we asked to come bid would not return a call. Some came to look and decided not to bid. So what you have in front of you, we have, came down to two bids and this is the one with A-plus best and we think is the one that's most applicable to what we need. This is going to take off the entire north shore, or north side of the roof. I do have to say that with the new tiles coming in, there probably will be a little color difference between what's there now and what will be remaining in the new tile. But we think this will be a better fix, worth the money, and certainly something that we want to do to protect our tremendous asset that we have as library.
So they're going to replace the broken tile?
Right. And you have some pictures there. I circled some issues that we have and one of Pam's big concerns is there's one pitch towards the end there on the southeast side, I believe, that just has no mortar there at all. So that's one of the things that she was really concerned about. Might certainly have it more past and repaired. I think it's going to be a better fix than what we've done in the past. Our billing inspector Dave Sarot's been up there five times with different contractors and as we go along this process, he'll be there to make certain that we do it right this time. So that's our recommendation.
So they aren't going to, they're only going to replace those tiles that are damaged or broken or cracked?
It will be a whole replacement of the north side.
A complete replacement?
Total replacement, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
We think that the other sides are in good shape right now.
Larry?
Yes, ma'am?
I'm not sure. It says number two, replace broken filled tile, brook rates, replace missing hit starter, rework IMPACT. I think they're going to replace the broken tile.
Really? Okay, that's my mistake. I thought I read someplace where we were going to replace the whole north side.
That's why the color difference.
Yeah.
I think they're going to reuse the tiles and up right there.
Okay.
That was my mistake.
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and approve the public construction contract with A Best Roofing.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve the contract with A Best Roofing. Any more discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
Yes.
Any new business that needs to come before the, needs to come before the library board at this time? If not, item nine.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you Bill. I now call to order the regular meeting of Perry Municipal Authority. It is January 16th, 2018. Roll call please.
Coleran, Gilbert, here. Franklin, here. Marshall, Ahern, here. Sebo, here. Laurel, here. Stroller, Johnson.
Item one, consent agenda, which is just item A of that, which is receiving approval minutes of the PMA of January 2nd, 2018. Do I have a motion, please? Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
Yes. We move on to item four, comments from those assembled concerning the municipal authority. Any comments? Seeing none. Item five, proclamation, commendation, reports and inquiries by the governing body. Council, staff, seeing none, we move on to new business? Any new business needs to be brought before the authority this evening? Item seven, please. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the city council of Perry. It is January 16th, 2018. Roll call please.
Coleran, Gilbert, here. Franklin, here. Marshall, Ahern, here. Sebo, here. Laurel, here. Stroller, here. Johnson.
We go to item one, consent agenda. We have items eight through I. Do you wish to withdraw some of those for further discussion? Please make a motion regarding that or approve as presented.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Gilbert, yes. Franklin, yes. Ahern, yes. Sebo, yes. Laurel, yes. Stroller, yes. Johnson.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move on to item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to the agenda this evening. Any comments? Yes.
Our first event that is coming up, we do with the city of Perry, it is our third annual trout fishing tournament, and that will be Saturday, January 27th. This is a really great event promoting CCC and the trout fishing that we have out there. It has been a little bit of a concern, there is a wrestling event that day, but the trout tournament starts at 6:00 AM, so we felt that that gave ample time for anglers to come out there, fish, weigh their fish, and then they can still attend the wrestling tournament if they choose to. So I will be out there bright and early, 6 o'clock, our ambassadors host that event, and we have flyers going out to all of the schools in the surrounding area, Perry, Morrison, and Frontier Schools. We have a Facebook event online, and we've put it through our constant contact, and we've emailed to all of our members, letting them know. And then we work with Bill Winthrop, who is with the Oklahoma Department of Wildlife Conservation, and they promote it on their website as well. So this is a really great event that promotes Perry and encourages tourism to come and fish for the day. So again, that event is Saturday, January 27th. The next event that we have through the chamber is our Chamber Banquet and Benefit. That is Thursday, February 8th, and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. That event, we go over all of the successes that the Chamber of Commerce has had throughout the year. We show all of our ribbon cuttings, new businesses that have come to Perry, events that have happened, and then we also announce our Citizen of the Year. So that is a really great event. This year, our entertainment is provided by Rochelle Seagris, and our catering is provided locally by Client's Catering. It will be moved, it's previously been in the event center at Perry, but it will be in the women's building. The next event we have coming up is the Chuck Wagon Dinner. That is a traditional meal that we serve in conjunction with the Noble County Livestock Show. That is Thursday, February 22nd. It will also be in the women's building, and that one is just known throughout Perry. People come, we serve to the public, and we typically expect to feed about 500 people. So that's a great event that people look forward to every year. Spring Fest this year falls on April 27th and 28th, that Friday night. We've always tried to do a car show, but we are changing it up this year a little bit. I don't want to announce exactly what we're doing, but we've involved some car enthusiasts, so they will, they're bringing a little bit more knowledge to this event, and I think will really help bring more cars to the event, and we're hoping that boosting the Friday night will help get people to stay and then attend our show on Saturday. And so that one is really exciting. I think that event has potential to grow, and this is a great way to start for Perry. And then Celebration this year, looking long-term, is September 15th. And this year, it's really exciting. As you know, in the past, we did not have the carnival through Celebration, that had always been tradition, and the last couple of years, we were just not able to have the carnival that week. We've done it in October, but this year, We Entertainment, this is their third year to contract with us, and they called and asked if they could bring it during our celebration. So that is really exciting, having that back. I think people in the community will be very excited just to get the carnival back through Celebration Week, that's when they know that it's going to be here, and I think that'll really boost sales for We Entertainment as well, and bring people back. And then I also have, we've been doing a lot through our office, I've worked a lot with Larry and Gordon recently, and Brahms is hosting a job fair, so that will be the first week of February. They have a job fair coming in, it will move into the second week if needed, and then hopefully we're looking at that facility opening up fairly soon. So that's really exciting, we're glad to have Brahms back and be able to help them with the job fair and get employees in there. So, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Would you mind emailing the outline to City Hall, and then we can distribute it to our council?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. We'll move on to item five, which is proclamation, commendation, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. Council, staff. One, okay, now we have our city manager for you.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had some calls recently about folks that want to pay their bill online, and they'll do a Google search for City of Perry, and they will be presented with a third party where they can pay their bill. That third party, while legitimate, normally charges a lot more than what we do, which is a dollar. I've heard as high as $10, so I have an option for those who would like to pay their bill online, let's go to thecityofperry.com, click Pay My Bill and Pay Online, it will cost you $1, and it's instantaneous. Some of those legitimate third-party sites, they will create a hard check, goes by snail mail, which means the possibility that you will be late with your water bill. So go to our website and save you some money, it's instantaneous almost, so it's right there. I did want to welcome to our work family Candace Gorman, who's a part-time library assistant, started January 2nd. She's going to be helping in the library while she completes her degree from Northwestern Oklahoma State University. Also want to say congratulations to Captain Jim McElveyn. He was selected by the state FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police, to attend the National Police Week in Washington DC this in May, and he'll represent the city with superbly. So, that's all. Any questions that you may have regarding the report?
Repeat that website address, Dixie, please.
Cityofperry.com.
Okay.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that anyone listening gets it.
Save you some money. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our chief financial officer. Mayor.
So, city manager, this is quite a little upgrade here. I think I'm going to have to work on the financials now. They're all nice and neat. I'll put some graphics on there, I'm going to get some.
Very good.
And color.
Ty Cardenas helped a lot, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ty.
Something other than black and red would be nice.
Now it's going to be all red. It's going to be all red. All right, you've got December financials in front of you. Sorry for not being here tonight, he was here yesterday. It was his birthday, he spent his birthday in Perry and decided that he needed to be home tonight, so you get me instead. So you've got 1231 financials in front of you. We're halfway through the fiscal year. When we look at cash, we're at $8.4 million. Compared to where we were last month, we're down about $661,000. We spent money on our sewer bonds, through our sewer bonds, and about $771,000 came out of our sewer bonds. So using that for capital projects, we know that that's budgeted, that's the reason when we look back at these sewer financials, you'll see a little bit of a loss there. Budgeted, projected, again, expected. So, came out of the 2015 bonds, specifically for that sewer project. Other than that, no significant changes in cash. There was a little bit of increase in general fund, basically just the timing of payment of bills, nothing that we're going to be able to hang our hat on or continue as far as growth for cash flow purposes. Questions on cash? Okay, when we look at the general fund itself, you'll see a net loss of $335,000. Seems a little bit higher than what we would have expected this time of year. I'll tell you, based upon the way administrative expenses are front-loaded, specifically audit expenses, workers' comp, we've already paid, those kinds of things, that's what's kind of creating this loss situation. Additionally, we have not transferred in as much as we have budgeted to transfer in from the PMA. That's simply because we haven't needed the cash. So when we look at transferring, we look at the cash basis, not necessarily how we compare to budget. So specifically on transfers, we're only at 38% of budget as opposed to the 50% of budget. Nothing to be concerned about. When you take out those transfers, we're still in a good position as far as revenues, exactly where they should be, and expenses where they should be, other than general government looks a little high, but that's because the audit costs right now. So that will even, it will spread itself out. Questions on the general fund? Okay, last one, municipal authority. On the municipal authority aside, because we have not transferred all that money over to the general fund, right, you're seeing an inflated profit over here, you're seeing about a half a million dollars worth of profit. So net, we net the loss over in the general fund and the profit in the PMA side, we've got, we're clearing about $175,000. So overall, we're in a good position, we're stable, we're where we want to be. Profit margin-wise, we are hitting exactly where we should be budget-wise, making money 32% on our electric, and we're actually exactly on 50% on our trash. The reason that our water looks a little off-kilter, capital improvements as well as debt payments coming out of there, okay? We budget for those, we expect that, so nothing to be concerned about there. Overall, looks good, about $175,000 in total for the city. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions? We'll move on to item eight.
Graphics next time.
Consider amendment of the date of receipt of bids to the automated meter reading system project, the project for January 30th, 2018, 2:00 PM to February 13th, 2018, at 10:00 AM, and approval of amendment number one.
We're actually asking that that be moved to the 14th week of conflict in one of our schedules. With respect to this automatic metering project, as you know, this was one of the main purposes of that note that we did late last year. We've been spending considerable time trying to get this right, and get the, what we're asking right, and making sure that the folks that are going to bid know what we're doing. We've met with them, we had a very good meeting with them, a two- or three-hour meeting with them, and now this response is after their meeting, we're getting, after talking to them, we're getting even more specific, exactly what we're wanting. Russ helped us with the bid sheet. You know, we're asking for water meters, both solid-state water meters and positive displacement meters, and I'll tell you right now, I have a prejudice, and that prejudice is you want solid-state ones, they have no moving parts, they measure the water with no moving parts, so there's no failure, you know, there's no, it tells exactly how much the water is, and I was going to change this, that that's all we're going to get, and Russ told me, no, you're not, because positive displacement meters are cheaper, okay? But we're going to make that argument when we get down there, I mean, they measure it better, they measure it better.
I think he can take you.
He can, he'll play football for you. But, but we're going to be talking about that, and hopefully we'll be getting some good bids there. We've been talking, Brian Wheatley has had a ton of input, I mean, a ton of input into this, because he knows what he has and he knows what he wants, and we want to make sure that these water meters are talking to the electric meters, and one of the most important things about this is the brain that we get. And what we want to do is, we want to have the ability for the customers to go to their own portal and to be able to figure out how they're using, what they're using, do they have a leak, all this stuff, and so, you know, we're asking these folks to give us a lot, and we're doing a lot of that as adders, and you guys are going to ultimately decide how much technology we're going to put into this, how much we can afford. This is going to be radio-driven, and so they've got to have antennas, and so we're giving them, if you look at this, we're giving them, you know, we've got a lot of water towers, and we also have radio towers, we're telling them exactly where those are. David Payne was very helpful in coming in and doing a system map, pointing out where the towers are. So what we took is, we took everything that they asked for, and we're giving it back to them. And I'll tell you, for some of my other cities, they hire engineers to do this, and of course, you get what you pay for. Okay? But, you know, an engineer doing this kind of proposal is a 6% or 7% override, and then you have $90,000, it could be a $90,000 fee, you know? And so we're doing this in-house with all of us, trying to, you know, trying to save money. We'll see how the bids come in, you know, and we'll make a determination. I want to do this right the first time, I want to get the right contractor, and if it's not right, you know, then we can go out and bid again or do something, because there's no rush, we have three years to spend that money. But I think that this is a, I think this is a very good document, I think we're going to be getting some good bids. I'm sorry that we didn't get it to you till tonight, but we've been working on other projects, and this has just come together, we had our bid meeting last Monday with the contractors, and it took us, if you look at it, there's a whole lot here. It took, it took a long time to put all of this together in a format that we think makes a whole lot of sense, so that's what we're doing. And so what we want you to do is to approve, now that will be the 14th again, and we didn't change the, oh, we did change, did we change it to noon? Yeah. No, no, it's still at 10:00. So we have moved that to the 14th. They're going to be able to submit questions, and if you look, we even answered questions here, they've already submitted some questions, and we've answered those questions to them, and we will keep you up to date with this process.
Real impressed with the turnout from the bidders that we had, just a good representation and with good input from them as well.
Motion to approve with the change February 14th.
Thank you, roll call, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you. Item nine, on the mid-readers, thank you, welcome. Item nine, consider approval of agreement for work on the Department of Properties for work to be performed at the Southwest Corner of Sixth Street and Grove Street to replace a portion of the sidewalk on the state's right-of-way for the installation of a drainage improvement. This is agreement with ODOT, and it's necessary to do this because Sixth and Grove is a part of the old highway system. Steve Frank is here, and he can explain in better detail than I can what's going on.
Thank you. Yes, there is the piece of sidewalk that will be removed in that area, but we are also stubbing a pipe into the back of the inlets that are at that corner, so everything flowing down the street today has to flow through these little six-inch diameter pipes that were cast in the ADA ramps when they did some improvements on that highway. It's really restricting flow, so as part of our project, as we upsize the culverts and clean out the ditches along Grove Street, we're also tying a pipe into the back of that inlet, and since the inlet is in the right-of-way, we had to get permission. I've talked with ODOT, it's as simple as filling out this form and getting a certificate of insurance, because the inlet is the responsibility of the city, so they really have no issues, it's just that we need an agreement to work in the right-of-way.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement as presented.
Second. Roll call, Dixie.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Ahern?
Yes.
Seabolt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Stroller?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Thank you, council. Item 10, consider review and approval of the 2018 street improvement program prepared by MKEC. Authorize MKEC to finalize bidding documents and authorize a city clerk to advertise for bids with the receipt of bids sent for a paper. I've talked with ODOT, it's, it's as simple as filling out this form and, and getting a certificate of insurance because the inlet is the responsibility of the city. So they really have no, no issues. It's just that we need an agreement to, to work in the right of way.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Motion to approve the agreement that's presented.
Second. We'll call Dixie.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, counsel. Item ten, consider review and approval of the two thousand and eighteen street improvement program prepared by MKEC. Authorize MKEC to finalize bidding documents and authorize a city clerk to advertise for bids with the receipt of bids set for February fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen at three P M. You see this list of four locations there and more? Steve is here, or Steve is here to answer any question you may have about this program.
The previous issue, is that going to make any difference on the Grove to Seventh Street intersecting with Highway seventy-seven? That's the same, a drainage is in the same spot, is it not?
That, that Grove and Seventh, that was what that permit was for.
So it was on Grove and Seventh?
Or Grove and.
No, Grove and Sixth.
Grove and Sixth, excuse me.
Yeah, Sixth, which is Highway seventy-seven.
Right, that is where the.
So there's no, in other words, what I'm asking is, is anything going to have to be changed when we go in and redo Grove from Seventh Street to Highway seventy-seven?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so this is outside of that. This, this change to, or the change that you're making here at the corner of Sixth and Grove, when we go in and repave Grove from Seventh to Sixth?
To Sixth. It's part of that project. So these culverts are outside the road, so as part of that project, in order to install that pipe to help drainage.
I just don't want to duplicate effort is what I'm asking. Are we going to, are we going to put in a sidewalk and then we're going to tear out a sidewalk?
No, it's all done at one time, one time. Just getting, getting it in line now, so when our contractor gets there, we don't have to stop.
Item nine was just get permission to get out of the right of way.
Okay.
This is the project.
I have the same question, thank you.
Is this the order you have on here? Is this how you're going to start the projects, you think, or?
Right now, the way I have it written is that Jackson was going to be last. I was going to let the contractor kind of dictate what order they were going to go in. Also, what's happening right now is utility coordination. So in early, early December, I sent out plans to all the utility companies, working with Sam on some of the city's utilities and some of AT&amp;Ts because they do not pothole any of their lines. One Gas does and they'll actually kind of prepare a nice document to tell you if there are conflicts. So we're working on that right now in case there's something that's, that's showing up as a conflict and maybe we move that street later in the year to allow for any changes that need to happen. But right now, I'm going to leave it up to the contractor. Other than Jackson, I want that to happen last.
When do you project it all starting? Do you have any idea?
I'd like to have them start as early as they can in March with the weather. So I'm thinking tentatively the twelfth or the nineteenth, have it be a Monday.
Move to approve the two thousand and eighteen improvement, or approve the two thousand and eighteen street improvement program.
And?
And authorize NEK to finalize bidding documents.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you still second?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll call Dixie.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank. We're going to move on to item eleven, a resolution of the city council, city of Perry, A notifying the folks that there will be a public hearing on the fifth day of March two thousand and eighteen. At or after six fifteen P M, the city council chambers and the city hall of the city hall, which hearing is held in pursuit of request of Sebridge Acquisitions L P, also known as Sudden Link Communications, our cable operator. Bryce has gone into great detail here and has been dealing with these folks.
Does that help? It says I've sent council chambers out of city hall.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's a mistake.
Should be council chambers.
We used to do them there.
Right.
Yeah, we, man.
Now, this is a request for extension or renewal of the, of the right to operate in community antenna television system within the corporate land of city of Perry, Oklahoma. And such public hearing held pursuant to section six twenty-six of the Cable Communication Policy Act of nineteen eighty-four. As amended, with the purpose of such hearing to, one, identify the cable related to community needs and interest, two, review the performance of the cable operator under licensing ordinance during the current licensing term, B, direct and city clerk to publish this resolution in a newspaper of general circulation within the municipality three times, at least five days prior to the date of the public hearing. C, approving the circulation and publication of the cable television satisfactory survey form attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference as directed by the city manager.
You know, cable TV has changed, as we all know. I mean, a lot of folks don't, don't take cable, they take DirecTV, but as we've been doing this, I mean, you know, in the old days, you didn't have, you didn't have much DirecTV. You had the big dishes, then you got the smaller dishes, then you got Dish, then you got DirecTV, then AT&amp;T bought DirecTV. And, you know, you never heard of streaming anything internet, then you got Netflix, then you got Amazon, then you got Hulu. And, and, and the truth is, is that the only time we get money is if it's true cable. Because they use our right of way. Now, you ask me, what's the difference between them using our rights away to stream their lines, to run cable through, to, to run internet through it? And, you know, it's just internet's just a little bit different than what cable is, running the same line. Why aren't we getting eight percent of the gross that they're making on internet? And on Netflix and all that? And, and the answer is the FCC's, you're not, says you're not, okay? Now, I, I'm hoping someday that that changes because it doesn't make any sense. And, you know, we're going to be, very quickly, there is going to be, you know, cable is going to be a dinosaur, a thing of the past and nobody's going to, or almost no one is going to have it, you know, anymore. And so there'll be no more revenue that comes and there'll be, you know, no more revenue available for, for PIN, you know? But that day has not yet come. Under the, under the rules, the cable company has to give us notice between thirty-six and thirty months.
Out of those.
From the renewal time. They have done that. And if you want any strength in your negotiation, you have to have one of these hearings at the proper time. And the proper time is between the thirty-sixth and the thirtieth month. Otherwise, I mean, there's not much you can say to them. So we have these hearings and we have this cable satisfaction thing where we go out and, you know, I'm asking Tyson if he'd like to add anything to the cable satisfaction form. And we put them there and we don't have to have this meeting here. We can set the meeting off, you know, the, the hearing off to another, to, to a later date if we wanted to gauge more, more time. But it was time to, you know, let's see if we can, you know, have it. Let's gauge the, the public's input, what they would like us to do. Because cable is getting less and less of the share of the market, it's more and more difficult to ask them to do, to add money. Tyson just told me he'd like to have cable down to the armory. That might be something that we ask for in addition to our five percent, which is what we get, five percent gross off that and that's what funds PIN. But it's always a good time to bring the public in here, ask them what they want, you know, what they would like and have the, and, and, and present those things to the, to the company. So we got that notice, we thought that we ought to tee this, tee this up. I'll tell you if you want, because one thing, I've been very busy and I haven't had an opportunity to contact suddenly and ask if they could be at the hearing, okay? I mean, I assume they could be because we're having a hearing, but, you know, he may be getting married then or something, you know? So if you want to, and I just remember, I, I remembered that, that I haven't called him about that. If you wanted to continue this, we could call him, you know, make sure he could be there. Doesn't have to be at that time and we could have another meeting or we could set it here. I just would hate to set it here and then him be unable to come. So I apologize for not calling him, but I've been busy and, but, and I wanted to, and I wanted to tee this up because I didn't want to lose the opportunity because this is all governed by federal law. This is all governed by federal law. So, you know, either a motion to approve this and set this, this is their system, I'm sure they'll show up, or a motion to continue it and to ask them and see what time, which one of our council meetings would be best.
Are we at the thirtieth or the thirty-sixth, which?
Oh, no, we're, we're close to the thirty-sixth. We're, we're close.
I believe it don't have.
Yeah, because they just, they just gave it to us, so we're closer there than, you know.
So we can move it out a month.
You could move it out a month and it wouldn't be a problem.
Or we could table it if they can't make it.
They ain't going to listen to what we got to say anyway. They never have.
Well, they came once and the guy told them he wanted more movies.
Yeah.
Remember that?
I do remember that.
I do.
So then they, then they added another fifty channels, but they were the same fifty channels that we had.
What maybe that guy did? So, new motion.
I'll make a motion and we continue this at least one more month.
Second.
And we will ask.
Thank you. We'll call Dixie.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yep.
Johnson.
Yes. Drive time, screwing around, a finger on that.
We will. I'll call them, I've got his number.
I can attest, he's been very busy. Item twelve, consider award of public construction contract to Denali Water Solutions LLC. For the wastewater treatment plant project, an amount of contract price of forty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, which was a great bid. We just recently, as of, well, yesterday, I guess, received the, all the bonds, papers and insurance on this, so now we can award the contract. So I'm asking you to.
Motion to award the contract to Denali Water Solutions.
Second.
Thank you. We'll call Dixie.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item fourteen, consider approval of public construction contract, A, best roofing for repair of the north side of Perry Carnegie Library roof, in amount of twelve thousand and fourteen dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. We'll call Dixie.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item fourteen, consider approval of public construction contract, A, best roofing for repair of the north side of Perry Carnegie Library roof, in amount of twelve thousand and fourteen dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second. We'll call Dixie.
Gordon.
Bill?
I, I went back and I was reading that contract a little bit and I think Larry and Pam are both accurate. It sounds like to me they're going to take off the entire north side, fix the north side and then they'll put them back using what they could use. So you're right, they are going to tear off the whole north side. But it sounds like to me that they're going to use the old tiles.
Beginning to think my reading skills were starting to go south there.
Well, I had to read it twice. I thought, well, it says they're going to take it off, but then it says they're going to use what they can use.
Because those forever tiles, I mean, until they get broken.
Using copper nails too.
There you go.
I know. They'll stay forever now.
Thank you, Bill, appreciate it.
Gordon.
Have a vote. Brooklyn.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes. Item fifteen, any new business? These brought forward, council decision, any new business? Saying now, we'll move on to item sixteen. Consider convening an executive session for the purpose of conferring on a matter pertaining economic development in the city of Perry and to discuss a business proposal to create and retain jobs and payroll related to the medical field, as public disclosure would interfere with the development implementation of proposals, percentage twenty-five OS three oh seven, C ten.
Motion to convene, or convene an executive session.
Second. Thanks. We'll call Dixie.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Ahern.
Yes.
Sebel.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Stroller.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
We don't talk. That's the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, in some situations like this, it's probably bad.
No, it's kids. It's kids. It's law. It's...
Really?
Yeah.
Motion to reconvene.
Second.
Thank you. Real call adjourned.
Gilbert.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Angher.
Here.
Sebo.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Steller.
Yes.
Yes.
Item eighteen, taking action deemed necessary presented to executive session.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Thank you. Real call adjourned.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Angher.
Yes.
Sebo.
Yes.
Moore.
Steller.
Yes.
John.
Sorry, y'all.